Okay, welcome back. The board was briefly in a non-public session and a board interview, so we will reconvene. Good evening, Exeter. Good evening to my colleagues on the board, respective town staff, and those at home watching on TV certainly. I'd like to start by introducing the board to my right, Selectman Dan Chartrand. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chair.
Our vice chair, Selectwoman Molly Cowan, good evening.
Hi, everyone.
Our clerk, Selectwoman Julie Gilman, good evening.
Good evening.
Selectwoman Nancy Belanger, good evening.
Good evening.
Our town manager, Mr. Rustine.
Good evening, everybody.
And our recording secretary, Joanna Bartel, good evening. And my name is Nico Papakosandis. We'll jump into public comment. We do not have any members of the public here in the Novak Room at this time, nor do we have anybody on Zoom. So we will jump into proclamations and recognitions. We do not have anything formal this evening, but I would like to just briefly acknowledge and recognize the Exeter Police Department and the Fire Department, and particularly Detective Bruce Page, and all of the volunteers and vendors that participated in the National Night Out last Tuesday. Selectman Chartrand and I were there for most of the evening. It was very well attended, and of course, due to the siphon project, it was not held at Swayze Parkway, but rather at Townhouse Common. And I think that everybody there decided that maybe that should be the venue moving forward. There was ample parking on all sides. People were able to enter from all sides. There were food trucks. It was just mobbed the entire time. Lots of little kids having fun. Lots of little kids throwing balls to dunk. Selectman Chartrand and I, we had a blast, and...
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Your daughter dunked me three times.
She keeps telling me, and I keep reminding her, that you're going to get her six times next year.
Revenge is a dish best served cold.
I know she ran past the bookstore the other day thinking that there might be...
She better watch out.
But really, just to shout out especially to Detective Page and both the police and fire departments. And certainly want to acknowledge and recognize the fire department that was quite busy yesterday, and thank them again for the public safety that they provide us. We did receive an email from a resident who wrote to thank the DPW, particularly Steve Dalton, had an issue with his mailbox, and wrote to the board particularly recognizing Steve and how quick Steve responded and took care of the situation. So I wanted to publicly recognize that as well. Okay, moving to the regular meeting minutes, I would first ask if there are any revisions or amendments to the select board regular meeting minutes of July 24th. Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the Town of Exeter Select Board Regular Meeting Minutes of July 24, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes.
Oh, I'll abstain to further request.
So it's 4-0 with an abstention. Thank you. And we just interviewed Michelle Crapo for an alternate position on the Conservation Commission. This is for a term to expire April of 2026. So I would entertain a motion at this time to appoint Michelle Crapo to the Conservation Commission as an alternate member for a term to expire April 2026.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 5-0, and we thank Michelle for volunteering. So we will jump right into our discussion items, and the first is the Squam Scott River Siphons Project Update. Before I turn that over to Mr. Dean and perhaps Ms. Roy, I'd like to remind those at home, the election is August 15 at the Tuck Auditorium from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Absentee ballots are available right now at the town clerk's office and can be brought back between now and Monday at 5:00 p.m. and by mail by Tuesday, August 15. So with that, Mr. Dean?
Sure. The last written select board update was on Friday, July 21, and that had the conductor pipe installation stopped at 50 feet because siphon pipe movement was observed during the hammering operation on the conductor barrel. The soil between the conductor pipe and siphon pipe was beginning to deform the 12-inch HDP siphon pipe. The soil between the pipes was removed with a jet truck, and the pipe was restored to its original shape. However, within 10 feet of additional conductor pipe installation, the siphon pipe began to deform once again. So the conductor pipe installation plan was abandoned. The new plan was to slowly pull the siphon pipe out of the hole while simultaneously backing out the 18-inch reamer by pushing from the mill side. This procedure was successful on July 27, and an intact drill shaft spanned the river. A bracket on the piece that connected the reamer to the swivel had sheared off, causing the original loss of connection with the siphon pipe. The conductor pipe was removed. Approximately 230 feet of siphon pipe was replaced and fused together. Another siphon installation pull was attempted on Wednesday, August 2, again by inserting on the parkway and pulling toward the mills. This siphon pull was unsuccessful, too. The 12-inch HDP siphon pipe was pulled to 220 feet from the Swayze Parkway side when the pull encountered an obstacle and could not be advanced any further. This is just short of the distance where the pulling shaft lost contact with the pipe on the initial pull attempt. The siphon pipe was backed out of the hole, and the drill shaft remained intact across the river. So the current game plan now is to ream the hole again to remove any obstacles starting on the mill side of the river and advancing towards Swayze Parkway. First, the 12-inch reamer will be utilized, then followed on separate passes with the 18-inch reamer. The direction of the pipe insertion has been switched. Pipe will be inserted from the mill side and pulled toward the parkway. The siphon pipe had been cut for the move across the river and will be fused together again next week. The mills have given permission for this activity, and the reaming process will begin on Monday, August 7. So that is the update. We expect that, as of today, we got a fresh update from interim director Vlasic. The 12-inch siphon pipe is being fused together on the mill side of the river. The pipe fusing is expected to be complete by Wednesday, August 9. The reaming process is underway, with the 12-inch reamer starting at the mill side and working toward the parkway, and approximately 340 feet have been reamed. We did have a fluid release. It was nontoxic drilling mud. That occurred around noon time today. DES has been notified of the release. After the 12-inch reaming process is complete, the 18-inch reamer will be used with the same process, and it's anticipated that the siphon insertion pull will take place next week on August 14.
Okay.
So that is the latest.
Mr. Selectman Chartrand.
So my question is rhetorical and a reminder. Because we have a lump-sum contract with a fixed price for all this work, all these additional permutations of work are not costing the town any additional money, correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
And is there an anticipated timeline? I mean, if this all proceeds without any other complications?
The pull, my understanding is that the pull is same day. So it should be on the 14th.
So ideally, without any other problems, this should be done next Monday?
That's what we'd anticipate, yes.
Okay. Okay. That would be nice.
Yes. I would agree.
Okay. Thank you for the update.
Thank you.
I'm going to ask the board's indulgence to postpone the second discussion item this evening, which was a Q2 financial report from Finance Director Corey Stevens. Unfortunately, Mr. Stevens had a very unexpected conflict this evening, but has offered to give the presentation on August 21. Is that okay with the rest of the board?
Absolutely.
Perfect. Thank you. So I will turn the next discussion item over to Mr. Dean and Selectwoman Gilman with respect to the CLG grant. Who wants to kick it off?
Shall I go?
Sure, Julie.
Sure.
That's the grant.
I know.
Thank you.
The Division of Historical Resources at the state level has a 10-year plan, or longer, to survey all the towns in Exeter. And by survey, I mean collective history of their development and special events, or special architecture, special properties, just to document it. So we have the whole state's worth of history in one place. And to go through that effort, of course, Exeter is too big a town and has too much history to be able to do it all at one time. As you can see from this grant, I'm doing very little. So the Heritage Commission applied for a grant via the Division of Historical Resources because we are certified local government, which means we prize our history, went through a process to be designated that. There are, I don't know, 30 towns in New Hampshire that are, and thousands across the country who are competing for money from the Department of Interior. So what we proposed this year was a historical survey of the Pine Street area, because that's an area that has some prominent buildings that people don't really know the history of. And there's some architecture there that is really quite significant and individual to the town. And there's some history of the cottage hospital, et cetera. So we put in a grant to hire a preservation planner to do the survey of the area. It includes Pine Street, Elliott Street, that area in between, some of Court Street. It abuts the Front Street Historic District, so they already have that piece done. So we were awarded a grant of $20,000 to complete this grant, which is what we asked for. And we need to accept the money as unanticipated revenue. It has to go to the governor and council to be signed because it's federal money that's coming in. So if we do this first, then it will sit on their desk for a little while, and we can start the work.
Okay. Well, it's very exciting. Thank you for doing this.
The Heritage Commission has been going through this. We started it with a mapping project that took all the known maps of the town that we could gather and digitized them in such a way that you can look at the development over history. Our earliest map is 1802, and you can see, and they outlined where the town was. And then, as time progressed, it grew and grew from the center. And so we're prioritizing our surveys by how the town developed, starting with the downtown. And that was already done through the national register process, and then going out further. We did the cemetery, Winter Street Cemetery restoration was part of the project, too, or part of one of the projects that we've done. So we're really excited. We missed a year or two, partly because of COVID, and also too many towns had applied for the competing funds. So I'm very excited to have this piece to get this year. So I think that's what I have. I think we probably want to designate the town planner as the... want to sign things because he helps me out with these.
I have to say, I watched the meeting that you referred to, the Heritage Commission meeting I watched on TV when you had the various maps. And it was really cool to see as you brought it into the...
Actually, that presentation is on our website, on the Heritage Commission page, if anyone wants to load it up. It's a PowerPoint show that you can just let it play.
And I would encourage folks, it was very interesting.
Thank you.
Then thank you for the work you did on this. I know it was a lot of time and effort.
We have a good relationship since we were one of the earliest towns to become a certified local government. So they like us.
What's not to like?
Exactly.
Any questions for Selectwoman Gilman?
Just a further comment. Thank you for all the work that you do on this, Julie.
It's my pleasure. My history, yay.
So would you like to make the motion?
I would, yes. I would move to accept $20,000 in unanticipated revenue from the Division of Historical Resources for a historic survey of the Pine Street area, and to designate the town planner to sign and, what's the other word I want, any documentation necessary.
Second.
So motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Thank you again.
Yay.
Our last discussion item came about as a conversation that I had with the town manager and assistant town manager, one of our weekly meetings. If you recall, we met back in April to go over our goal setting. And I thought this would be a good opportunity three or four months down the road to kind of look at where we're at. And after the town manager and Ms. Roy put this together, it was really exciting to see that while we haven't completely achieved our goals, we are well on our way on a lot of these, and I think more so than in the last couple of years. So, you know, some of the highlights I wanted to bring up was the department head succession plan, the long-term organizational plan, the study on the classification, which came back. And the finance director, assistant town manager, town manager worked very hard to bring options to the board. We acted on that immediately. We've initiated conversation with the Communication Committee to improve on our communications. We had an exciting presentation. I know we'll be taking further steps with them as we go along towards the fall with the budget coming out. Some of the capital projects, we're going to take another attempt at the Public Safety Building. We've continued to review and evaluate parking. We have moved to go forward with several of the warrant articles that was passed in March. The Park Street, I mean Pine Street, Linden Street, Front Street, roundabout is one. Looking at wrapping up the TIFF district, the Black Heritage Pocket Park, Swayze Parkway reconfiguration, which we'll be dealing with probably later this month, more than likely the first meeting in September. So those were just some of the highlights. We're going to have, we had one all boards meeting directly after our goal-setting session in May. And Mr. Dean, I'd like to target a date in October that we could have another, and make sure that all boards and committees are invited, and that we know that they got the invitation. Let other board members chime in, please.
Mr. Chair, I'd also comment on the 91A training. We are facilitating that as we speak with NHMA. So we should have a proposed date for you soon for that. So we'll be reaching out to all the boards and committees to attend that as well.
To remind the board, we looked into a 91A training, and I think the NHMA was charging, was it $50 or $55 per person to attend? And Mr. Dean and I had a discussion. We went back to the NHMA, and we were able to negotiate one free training. So we will try to get as many committee members and chairs, certainly. It's a very important training.
Yes.
No, I sat through one they did back in 2018, and it was incredibly informative. So take advantage of that.
Yep. We're looking at the library and also in the fall for this as well.
Okay, great.
So may even be October as well.
Okay.
Plus, I will say, 91A has been jiggled with several times since 2018. So not in very big ways, but one of the concerns was when we meet with town council, that usually we need to do that in public, or non-public, because of whatever the issue is. And they had changed it so we could discuss just getting whatever was in the letter from our council or having the council on the phone. And they wanted that to go away. They wanted us to negotiate our union contracts in public, which would have been very difficult.
To say the least.
So all those things got defeated, but there's still a couple little things that have changed.
Yeah. So 91, I try to take a training at least once a year because of the nuances that happen. And also, it's not just someone going through the scenarios in the process, but it gives people an opportunity to ask questions that they're not quite sure about. So I find that invaluable.
We had talked a couple years ago about onboarding people to the different committees and et cetera. And I know that with at least the Heritage Commission, that includes a copy of the statute as part of the, you know, process, rules and procedures, et cetera. And I don't know if other committees do that.
That's one of the things that we've talked about. That was one of our goals for this year, was to establish onboarding. I think we had, we just passed, was it last month? Might have been in June. We'd been working on our plan for committees, started with Selectwoman Roundtree Olaf and I. Selectwoman Belanger helped me out, and we just, was that in May or June? But we'd set...
I can't remember.
We'd set criteria, Mr. Dean, correct?
I think it was May the last time.
Yeah, you did.
Because, yeah, we tweaked a few things in May.
So we wanted to have, we wanted to have the chairs submit goals and objectives, I'm just going off memory, once a year. The select board reps were going to report back, I think, Selectwoman Cowan, we talked about twice a year with the goals and objectives, and you'd talked about putting together a standard report that we could all use for our committee report status updates during board meetings?
Yeah. I do recall that. I mean, I still think that it is a good idea to sort of try to find something so that there is some sort of summarized, in standard form, what happened in committees. You know, some of them are taped, some of them are not. Some of them, you know, we don't get to go to, and then tagging somebody else in so that there is some sort of continuity of like, oh, I can look at my, you know, Google Doc or Digest or whatever. But I know that we were worried about running into legal trouble in terms of like, if we're all communicating outside of a meeting, what does that look like? So I don't know where we ended up.
One more thing. The Office of Planning and Development at the state also has seminars, and it's not just on planning, and they're free. I think they're typically Mondays, Monday lunchtime things. And I believe that they do a 91A periodically. So that might be enticing, more enticing to our volunteers rather than coming to another meeting.
And I think to your point, 91A has changed since 2018, but I still have, there was a six-page brochure that the NHMA had back in 2018 that's incredibly valuable that I still keep.
Well, the basics are still the same. It's just, you know, they'll talk about different scenarios, and then they can apply something differently from year to year. So it's just a good idea to do it.
So I think if we, you know, I have that. If you don't have it, Mr. Dean, but also we could ask NHMA if they have an updated one. For instance, when the Sustainability Committee was first implemented, I made copies, our first meeting distributed it to all the members. And I think that could be part of the onboarding packet.
Yes.
It's brief. I mean, it's not voluminous, but it's enough that, you know, you get the gist of what you can and cannot do.
Yeah, I haven't cracked open the Boarding Committee Orientation Packet in a little while. I think that, I know that there's 91A information in there. It's just a matter of if it is this specific information.
Well, I think we need to go back to that memo. It was either May or in June because the board voted to adopt that at that time. So we need to go in with your office and start making sure that that's part of the onboarding process.
That it's all part of it.
Which involved having the chairs and the committees meet with the new volunteers, new committee members.
Yes.
I don't think we ever decided who from your office, whether it was going to be the assistant town manager or you, but just to sit down and kind of go through that process.
Yeah. And I know right now it's Pam that's primarily pushing out the paperwork to the committee volunteers and having them sign up and make sure they get sworn in with Andy Kohler and so forth. So if we want to go more in depth than that, obviously, Ms. Roy or myself can meet with the volunteer.
Can I think just having them come in for a half hour?
Yeah.
Meet with, if the chair of that committee can't make it, at least have whichever department head is assigned to that committee come in and meet them.
Sure.
And just sort of go over the nuances and...
That'd be very healthy to do, I think.
Yep.
Good introduction to committee work.
So Molly, I've been thinking about what you said, and I'm just going to throw an off-the-cuff idea out there. So I typically type up my notes, and I don't read them all because we'd be here until midnight, right? But I try to hit the highlights, and then I don't repeat things that other people have had. But maybe we could, if people could just type up their minutes or their notes, and we could store them somewhere. So I don't know, I don't know how it would work where, say I have to fill in for Parks and Rec. They'd be all in a folder, and Parks and Rec could somehow be not tagged but searched so it comes up. I don't know, something. Because I understand what you mean about the Google Doc, if we're alternating, doing any changes.
Yeah.
Or we just store our notes there so that if someone has to fill in for me for the planning board, all they have to do is go in my file and see my notes. Something.
So in order to, a way around that, you could do a Google Form, just like a survey, where it's... where it's, you know, what meeting did you attend, what date, and then a block of text where you put some bullet points. And then allowing all of you access to a read-only format of the results would mean that you guys are not able to interact or talk back and forth. And it would just, you just go on the link and fill out the information and then you could search for it that way.
Speaking of 91A.
Right.
Well, this would be the way to make sure that we're on the up and up because you wouldn't have access to edit anything. You'd only have access through a different, so you'd get a link to a Google form. It would say, you know, what's the date, what's the meeting? And then, you know, an open, give us 10 bullet points or something.
It's a good solution.
All of that goes onto a Google Sheet. But if you only have access to view it, you can't be in trouble for 91A because you would only be reviewing.
It's not a conversation.
Right. It's not a back and forth.
Yeah. That would, that would have been my concern, but that is a nice way around it. The minutes are the official record of the meeting.
I know. And some people do a good job about taking minutes and some committees don't do a good job about taking, and so, you know.
So I think, and that was a great idea. The concern at the time was making sure that, you know, you go to a committee meeting, you may not remember everything by the time you come to the select board meeting or you get wrapped up in whatever work we're doing that night and you forget something or maybe you can't make the select board meeting because as Selectman Chartran said, I mean, once you report on it at the select board meeting, it's in the minutes. It's in the minutes of the other respective meeting. But we've had instances in the past where not everything got reported to the board and we missed something and it came back to.
Right.
It's like it's more of just, you know, we're human.
Right, right, right. I think that, I think that that would be a really great idea. I know it would certainly keep my, me more organized. And it's like, oh yeah, what happened with that water and sewer committee meeting? Oh, that's right. We didn't have a corps. So we didn't have it. But I mean, even, you know, just things like that are helpful reminders as.
And as you described it, Ms. Roy, it's not, it doesn't sound like it's a lot of extra.
No.
For some work. Is that something you can, you can develop for us sometime? Okay, great.
Right. And then we won't miss the high points of things that are happening that we should flag for our select board members or the public.
Mr. Chair, can I shift this to a different topic of conversation?
Please, I have one, just a comment from Ms. Roy. Some of us, I'm not embarrassed to say you'll have to train me how to do that, but.
You'll be fine.
Go ahead.
One of my goals that I mentioned was wrapping up the TIFF district. And I want to point out that later in our packet, there's a nice summary of the TIFF district. I think it's in correspondence, maybe?
Yep.
I really appreciated that went in there. It helped me to understand why maybe we don't want to wrap up the TIFF district quite yet. So I'm kind of backing off a little bit on that goal. I do think it's important to, to do it expeditiously because it's, it's good for the taxpayers to wrap it up at some point, but there are a couple of projects that need to happen and there's not enough money there yet to pay for those projects. And one of those projects is going to be held up by some legal stuff. So I'm backing off on let's wrap up the TIFF right now. But I appreciated the information. Thank you.
And we're going to, we're going to speak to that later when it comes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other comments on the goals thus far? Again, I have to say, I was, when, when we work on these meeting by meeting, you don't appreciate the amount of work that we've already really accomplished in the last three months. So it was really exciting to see that we're, we're on our way with a lot of our initiatives.
Yeah. So I know I had some concerns on the Housing Advisory Committee because we don't, we don't vote on anything. We don't have enough members. But we're still a working group. But we really haven't, I don't have any suggestions other than if we look at, at some point, we're going to look at all of the boards and committees. So I figured that can be dealt with then and see where we're at. Maybe we'll get some extra members and we'll have a working committee again. But, you know, we're still functioning. So it's still doing the regional approach, so.
You know, and I think to that, and Mr. Dean, we need to start having the conversation in the fall, maybe simultaneously with budget. Some of our committees that we've looked to try to maybe either merge or revise in terms of numbers or scope, I know would need to go to town warrant. I'm thinking.
Depending on the committee.
Yeah. There are some that we've already talked about. Water and Sewer is one.
Yeah.
Heritage and HDC. So I think we need to take a real close look this fall.
I think so too.
Now's the time.
Mm-hmm. I also wanted to point out too, then, we'll report out on the Communications Advisory Committee meeting from last week that Selectwoman Belanger and I attended, that the newsletter is on the way.
Okay.
There's really good news on that front.
Great.
We're just about ready to, I'm not going to say launch. I don't think we're quite there yet. But we do have MailChimp purchased and merged into a single account, a larger account. And Bob Guack, he's been working on the newsletter, sort of the backend of the newsletter. So we're almost in a position to begin to just be going out to departments and saying, provide us information for this newsletter.
And this is the electronic version?
Yes.
Yeah.
And how often would that be sent out? Is that a monthly, bi-monthly?
So we haven't, we haven't made a determination on that. I'm, I am thinking once a month at this point. And if the board has some different ideas about that, certainly we'd be willing to listen to that. But at this point, we're thinking maybe once a month or maybe twice a month.
Okay.
Right. Because the, they're doing the video, right, the bi-monthly. And it's also we're, they found, we're finally coming to the realization that we're not a business or a town. So it's the approach, we're going to have to take it slow and tweak it as we go type of approach.
Of course.
So it was a really good meeting, but we'll talk about it later.
Is there an editor in chief or editor in chiefs that would be after the final?
Well, the editor in chief would be probably our office, you know, between the assistant town manager and myself. And the, the writing, the initial writing of it would be done by the media communications coordinator.
Mm-hmm.
And so that's how it would go.
But passing through your office before it goes out?
Yes, before final publication, yeah.
I'm comfortable with that.
Yeah.
Okay. That's good news.
Mm-hmm.
Great. That's a great next step.
Yes, thanks. We're pretty happy about it.
Good.
I'm almost done with the Google point.
Well, I need to be on the list of training, so.
Always from the back row. I know, chief. Anything else? The goals and objectives?
Other than this list really helped to realize how much we really have.
Yeah, it's exciting.
Accomplished. It is. It was a good eye-opening.
Mr. Dean, for the August 21st meeting, if you could, if you could bring back maybe several dates in October for us to look at.
Okay.
Understanding that late October is budget season, so.
Yeah.
Probably early to mid.
Yeah, that's, I think that's what we're thinking at this point.
Great, okay. Anything else? Regular business. Madam Clerk, I do not think there are any abatements, credits or exemptions.
We get the summer off.
We do have several permits and approvals. The first of which is a revision to the non-union proposed FY '23 classifications and grades. We've had an opportunity to review this. If there are no questions or comments, I would entertain a motion to adopt the extra non-union proposed FY '23 classification grades as revised.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post. Motion passes 5-0. Mr. Bisan, good evening. Haven't seen you in a while.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. Let me take off my glasses so I can see. In your packet, you'll see several requests from us. Our first is our annual permit for the Powder Keg Beer and Chili Festival on October 7th. As we had always agreed upon, anything that has to do with alcohol and Parks and Rec, we come to you guys for approval. Some modifications we've done this year after surveying, we are going back to a solid, we're not breaking them up into sessions, but we're, we tweak that as well. There's a, going to be a VIP hour with only 500 people allowed in for the first hour. And then from 1 to 4 will be the general admission. We're going to still keep the same attendance, 3,000 people, as we had with the previous two sessions. And we are going to a reusable cup, not the one-time compostable. So there, there is a, it's not glass, it is, it's not plastic either. It's diro something. And people can keep them because that's the one thing we heard is people like to collect the little glasses at home. So that's really the gist of it.
Can you be more specific on what it is?
I'd have to.
In case we're asked later?
It is, I'd have to Google.
Single-use plastic?
It's not a single-use plastic. It's multiple-use. So you can take it home and, and as my kids do, drink juice out of it.
So one of the, I'm curious, why, why going back to the one block rather than the two blocks? Because I thought that was a big hit.
Actually, the breweries and the patrons both overwhelmingly in surveys did not like it because.
Really?
The patrons thought they were rushed.
Yep.
And the breweries didn't like it because people, they felt, were rushing and coming to them. So this will slow people down.
Fair enough.
Hmm.
And will they, they still be using the combustible?
For chili.
Combustible.
Compostable. Yeah. We're still, we're still having compostable cups and spoons for our chili. So that will still remain there. We're contracting with Mr. Fox again. So we're hoping to cut down on waste.
I knew there was a reason you were here.
And as in the permit is, yes, Eric provides a detail usually.
All those combustibles.
Yeah. And the police also, there are six detail officers on site as well.
In case it's combustible.
Yes.
Some of that chili is hot.
And we are getting a good response for both, all vendors.
Good.
There's going to be a good variety of vendors down there. Some restaurants are really stepping up. And we have some good people selling tchotchkes, like fire pits. If you want to buy one at a, the beer festival and carry it home, oh yeah. He's coming back. He hasn't been back since pre-COVID. He also does customized bottle openers. And we're selling, someone can have customizable flights they can buy to go home with. And if you don't know what a flight is, it's a board with little cups.
Thank you.
So.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah. And then we're also a lot of clothing, a lot of art. So we have things and we have a kids' area, as always, which we have the giant Jenga, Connect Four, Yahtzee. We have Yaad Yahtzee, the dicer like this. So, I mean, and cornhole. So we have a lot of activities.
I never get beyond the entrance because I'm always working. So maybe that should all get down there.
So we're anticipating having good, and the chamber has done a great job in securing a lot of the stuff.
Prebought tickets again?
Some people have. We put them on sale last year as pre-Christmas so people could buy them for Christmas presents.
That's a good idea.
Presently, we've sold 320 tickets, which is outstanding.
Yeah.
Because usually it's all sold with two weeks before the powder keg.
Looking forward to it again.
Fingers crossed for good weather. But as always, we always get weather insurance.
All kidding aside, this is a great, this is a great event. And I know you and the chamber and the volunteers do a, do a wonderful job. And it's a hit. One question though, if the, I'm going to say when the article passes next week, when are they going to start the work?
Yeah, it's after the.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just asking now.
Okay.
When the article passes.
Change order number three.
When, when they pass, when it passes. But we're already making alternatives for other events later on. So we are cognizant of this. And we actually, per Russell Melissa, we actually had a Plan B in case we needed to shift it. So thank God we don't have to do Plan B.
Leaving it there because.
Yeah.
Maybe it would combust.
Yeah.
All kidding aside.
Right.
Any other?
No, just that, I, thank you again for doing this. I, a lot of people don't see the behind-the-scenes setting up. Everyone is there bright and early, as those of us who worked in notice. It's a team effort and you guys do a tremendous job every year. So thank you.
Thank you.
And for those thinking of volunteering, I mean, I haven't volunteered since it returned after COVID, but I volunteered pre-COVID for a couple of years. And it's a blast. It's a lot of fun. So if you're looking to help.
Most people are very happy to come in and they're really happy when they're leaving too.
And we're really, it's really important to thank the volunteers because without the volunteers, we need.
Absolutely.
A boatload of volunteers at the beginning and a lot, we're actually utilizing Caroline Thuma's, she's going to be teaching the festivals and events class at UNH this fall. And one of her class assignments will be, oh, you got to volunteer in the afternoon so that when we have to pick up everything, we're going to get 20 students that, that will be coming to Exeter to clean up with us.
That is.
Yeah.
But you know, and you said it, you see the volunteers in the front that are, you know, scanning the tickets, putting the bracelets, giving out the glasses. But the volunteers that are behind the scenes in the morning, who are putting up the tents, who are doing the heavy lifting, you don't get to see them before they really.
You don't. And it's incredible to watch them all working really well together. If someone's wheel comes off their cart with their, with their, there's always just people will jump in there to help them do what they need to do. It's a really great experience. And people are, for the most part, really happy and having a great time and excited to be there and.
All the vendors use us as a model when they go to other beer festivals because.
That's great to hear.
Outstanding volunteer. Usually they're, have to schlep all their stuff in themselves where we have volunteers waiting because we know how traffic can back up very quickly. So we try to move them off the parkway as possible, quickly as possible and usher them out and help them. Because a lot of them are one person that drove an hour and a half because they're the only sales rep in New England and, so.
It's a great experience.
So we haven't done this in a while. Is this, you need a motion to allow you to permit this?
Yes.
Okay. Then I would entertain a motion to allow the Exeter Parks and Recreation Department to permit the Powder Keg Beer and Chili Festival for October 7th between the hours of 7:00 AM and 6:00 PM at Swayze Parkway.
So moved.
Second.
So a motion in the second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you. Next in your packet is a funding request from the Park Improvement Fund. One of the things that I know with the 10 Hampton Road hanging over us, it's very important to realize that our staff still needs good working conditions. Our garage at 32 Court Street has developed a leak over the last year to the point where drywall has fallen off the ceiling. So we are looking to repair it, knowing that we could be there short-term. But at the same time, storage is very valuable in this community, especially for town-owned equipment. So we think it'll be better used after it's repaired. So if, when we move out and relocate the Parks Department to the 10 Hampton Road, it'll be utilized by other departments that need it.
Any questions for Mr. Bisan?
I have one. Is this part of the historic structure that you inhabit or?
No.
It's an ancillary building?
It's the garage behind it, Dan. That was actually built by volunteers. I know Mr. Doug Eastman actually helped build it here in town. So, and a couple other select board members at the time.
Okay. I just was wondering.
That's a good question.
Thank you.
Okay. I would entertain a motion to allow the Parks and Recreation Department to expend $6,500 from the Park Improvement Fund to replace the garage roof at 32 Court Street and award refined roofing with the contract.
So moved.
Second.
And a discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post. Motion passes 5-0.
Our second.
I'm sorry, Mr. Bisan. Any, any, any update on when you may be moving?
We're waiting on Public Works to finish a few items. Just waiting on them.
So like maybe this year or?
It is. When, I kind of skip ahead here. When we had the walkthrough with a lot of architects and engineers, they asked why we would move.
So, so we're also looking at the construction project as well.
Yep.
In terms of what it means for the building and whether we're able to move the employees sooner rather than later.
Safely.
So it may be, yeah. So it may be that we don't move right away. So it may be, yeah, so it may be that we don't move right away because of the scope of the construction that is going to happen to the building. But we'll, we'll continue to monitor that and come back to you just to make sure that you, you're aware of when that would take place.
Sounds good. Thank you. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Our second funding request, we're asking for RECP revolving tennis court repair. Last, the tennis courts are aging. We actually redid the tennis courts my first year here 20 years ago. They were milled down, rebuilt. Well, last year's mild winter and rain caused a lot more damage than we had anticipated. The patches that were put on several years ago prior to me being director are now starting to peel up, creating uneven surfaces. And so unfortunately, the only solution that does this when it occurs is either to mill it out or repave the whole thing. Obviously, we don't have funds to repave the whole thing. So milling out the areas that have the patches, repaving those areas specifically, and then doing a proper seal coat over it with a tennis court product that our staff will do in-house. Unfortunately, not many companies specialize in sports courts, but we were able to finally secure one with MSW Paving out of Hampton. They've performed this type of project on numerous courts. They are available to do it in September. The pavement needs to cure for 30 days before we put the sealer on it. So that would give us time where this could cause the, and I should correct this, the lower courts only to be closed for 30 days. So I know it's a big thing, but unfortunately, they could deteriorate where the town would be held liable for any trips and falls. So this is something to solve that solution and to hopefully extend the life of the tennis courts 10-plus years.
The lower courts?
The lower courts.
And September is the absolute latest you can wait?
Yeah, because the sports sealer that goes on it, it needs to be 50 and above. If it gets too late, we'll have to wait. And with the milling, we don't want water penetrating the cracks of the mill on the other side of it.
Does the multiple use of the courts do anything to?
No.
No?
No. It's, I think in the future, when we look to rebuild those courts, Chair, we need to look at really a French drain around them. A lot of things, and especially when we went through the whole project of looking at the recreation park, everything drains that direction. So there's a lot of water that travels by those courts and under those courts. So we need to do something when we rebuild them, either different material. There's a concrete material that they recommend that is bound by wire inside of it that will prevent cracking, but some kind of French drain underneath to divert the water around them so it goes clearly on the other side.
Is there a plan to manage the existing three courts for the rest of the fall season?
Yeah, the programs would then be canceled and just be open to general public to use. We wouldn't, we've already told our pickleballers and they totally understand and they would love to see this done as well. So, and our tennis players have expressed concerns over some of the cracks, but we will manage it so that it's open to the public so people will be able to use the courts up there.
So all the lessons are postponed for the fall?
Pretty much. We found a, the tennis in the parks, we found a new location. We're going to be using Phillips Exeter Academy, most likely.
I mean, the pickleball?
Oh, yeah. Yep, all done.
So everyone gets that this is short-term pain for long-term gain?
Correct.
Got it?
Yep.
So how's that going to work with the three courts if?
We'll have to just monitor it and make sure it's not open, that we don't have any scheduled programming, it's first come, first served.
Walk me through how we can avoid, I mean, the courts are used for multiple use. I'm not going to name one or the other, but how can we eliminate the possibility of folks reserving courts? In other words, in other words?
Going up in this
Putting down your towel before you're ready to lie on the beach.
I think signage and communication by our part, like no courts are reserved, it's already posted that you cannot reserve, you can't, you're not supposed to
I know it's posted, but
Yeah. Unfortunately, the camera project has been put on hold.
I was just going to ask you.
I'll ask that question. Why has the camera project been put on hold?
Right now, they were being installed in-house and that person is no longer available.
Okay. I'm just going to make the subtle suggestion that you may want to make sure you're, somebody within Parks and Rec is frequently monitoring
Yep.
The three courts. So that's all I'll say.
Sort of like putting your lawn chair out in this shoveled parking spot.
Oh, no, you have to do that. You have to do that. I lived in Boston for 14 years. No, I'm just talking about, you know, you go to a resort and it's 6:00 a.m., you put your towel, you take up 10 chairs and you go back up and sleep for five hours. I mean, you know, setting up, throwing your tennis racket down or putting up the pickleball thing and then leaving.
Mr. Chair, we will be up there more often than not.
Maybe a couple PSAs too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
This is happening.
And if it becomes a problem, we will have to consider reserving courts at the high school possibly after hours for any type of program for tennis or trying to coordinate with the SAU to alleviate the pain of having five courts down. But this is something that's very important to happen or else
Oh, no, this has to happen. I totally agree with you.
Yeah, that is not the issue.
That's not the issue.
We are anticipating the other issues that will arise.
I, I just hope that everybody can get along. I would hate to have to close down three healthy courts because
Yeah.
There's constant More, more to come, Mr. Bisson. Everyone good?
Yeah, you said everything very well. Thank you.
So I would entertain a motion to allow the Parks and Recreation Department to expend $10,000 from the Recreation Revolving Fund to repair the cracks in the tennis courts and award the contract to MSW Paving.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 5-0.
And I will be back once the milling is done. I'll be back with the exact square footage because you don't want to buy extra of this sealer that goes on tennis courts. You want to have exactly enough because one, we want to have a use for, but two, it's expensive.
Right.
And no other tennis companies, because of the weather, have been available to surface them. So. And lastly, some exciting news. We are coming before you to have a recommendation for design and engineering of 10 Hampton Road. We held a site block on July 19th and several firms came in attendance. We were excited. We had some of the big hitters. But unfortunately, we only received two proposals. A lot of them citing time constraints because the grant is a very tough time constraint, heavy workload because everyone is super busy, and the inability to fit into their project schedule. The two proposals were evaluated on affordability, experience, and proximity to the project. You'll see the two quotes, BL Companies, $174,000, which would have eaten up one-fifth of our grant, pretty much. And then JSA Design, which is $58,400. Comparing them apples to apples, it was a no-brainer. JSA Design brought over 40 years of experience, obviously a much lower number, but they bid on the exact same thing. BL Companies unfortunately was quite a bit more expensive. They would be traveling from Connecticut. But JSA has won numerous awards and in your packet you'll see the awards. They actually are the firm that designed River Woods Northeast Rehabilitation Hospital at Peas, Great Bay Community College, the McConnell Hall at UNH, and Cary Cottage of the Creek Farms. They're based in Peas Air Force, or wow, Peas Development. And they're, one of their things is they're very experienced in accessibility. So we are asking for approval to move forward, to send the contract to our legal team so we can have Russ sign it and move forward with the design.
And the $58,400 is to set them up, the contract?
Yes. Yep.
And where's that money being expended from again?
That would be coming out of our match that you guys had voted on. It'll be the Park Improvement Fund and Contracted Services, not Contracted Services, sorry. Recreation impact fees.
So we should probably include the amount into the motion?
Yes.
I'd entertain a motion to allow the Parks and Recreation Department to enter into a contract for $58,400 with JSA Design to conduct design and engineering for the 10 Hampton Road renovations and to further authorize the town manager or is designated to sign the contract.
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes.
Firm's
Thank you, Mr. Bisson.
I applied to my first job at
You applied for the first job there?
My first job out of college, I applied there.
Oh.
Thank you, Greg. Mr. Dean?
Okay, first thing on my list tonight is to let the board know of Andy Swanson's pending retirement, our IT coordinator. Andy will be retiring in October of this year and he has made it official for us. And I can tell you that I've been working with Andy since August of 2005. He was the town's first IT coordinator. Proud to say he was hired on my watch, which I'm glad we brought him here when we did because he really took IT to the next level with the town and was always very receptive to kind of getting inside the guts of our system and working with it. And over the years has provided just a great level of service to us and has been a great valuable asset to the, to the staff. And we'll certainly miss him. And I know he's got plans going forward, but just wanted to acknowledge his retirement and there will be more to come on that. But for tonight, that's, we say thank you to Andy and we wish him all the best.
He was our very own MacGyver.
Yes. Absolutely.
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 18 years in that spot is, that's pretty good.
I know.
Firing.
As things changed, you know, he evolved with the job and I wish him the best in retirement and I thank him for all the service to the town.
Yeah. And Andy was really instrumental too. People should know in the EXTV conversion from the one channel to the three channels and participating in that process all the way through with an older cable television committee when we did that, when we made that transition back, and I think it was 2009 when it finally materialized. But he's been, he's been great on the TV front as well, not just as, as IT coordinator. So he's worn a lot of hats for us.
Well, we'd love to have him at one of our meetings as he gets closer to retirement so that we can respectively, respectfully honor him in public.
Sounds good. Excellent. Okay, next on the list is just reporting out on the Communications Advisory Committee meeting. We alluded to it earlier, but like I said, the newsletter is starting soon. We also talked about the draft communications plan that the committee put forward or was going to put forward to the select board. So that is being worked on by the committee. And if you go back to the June, I think it's June 2nd was the date of their report, there are three or four things on that first page that they're recommending that we've already tackled and are working through. So there's a lot of really great progress being made on that front. So just wanted to mention that. Budgets are underway. The departments are working on these. Just a little bit of a preview for the board. Some of the things we're looking at are the tree budget that we talked about with the tree committee. So that's being worked on and I have a draft of a tree budget already. We're looking very closely at the, at the welfare function in terms of how we're going to handle it in the future. We are really at a point, I think, where we need to think seriously about, about getting some assistance in that, in that regard and maybe in breaking it into a separate entity from what it currently is today. So we've been talking about that internally. We've been talking about it at our executive committee meetings and we, we think we're, we're on board to go that route. So we'll have a proposal for the board to, to look at in regards to that. Also, the chief is looking to add a new police officer for the first time in, in some time. That is a staffing issue that he's identified and he's been making a very good argument for that. So we'll, we'll have that police officer on the, on the docket for discussion. And the other thing I wanted to mention is we're also talking about a wellness fund, which is we would put like $15,000 to $20,000 of seed money into a wellness fund for wellness activities that are not covered by the town's insurance plan. So people would be able to tap into this fund. We are thinking $5,000 per employee group. So they would be able to, $5,000, not per individual, but per group of employee. And by that, I mean like DPW, police, fire, and then the non-union employees. And they would be able to access those funds to do things like, you know, things to support mental health and wellness. And they would be done on the employee's own time. They wouldn't be part of their day-to-day job, but they would be able to access those kinds of services. So we'll be talking more about that as it evolves.
Can, can we think long and hard? I mean, I'm all for, I'm all for physical and mental wellness for employees. And I think that whatever resources we as employers can offer is vital. But I think we need to look at how we're allocating resources, number one, and number two, looking at beyond health insurance, if you bring in a third-party EAP, that's a possibility. I mean, I know you sit on the Health Trust.
Right.
So perhaps you can go back as a board member? And I'm just, I'm a little leery of putting a set of funds in a fund to be divided. By the way, that's not three ways. So it wouldn't be 5,000 each. So you'd have to go back and do the math.
I did four groups at five apiece, so
Well, you said 15,000, so.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, let's just have, let's talk about that more. I think that how, how is that going to be distributed equally? Who's going to monitor that or who's going to? How does that work? I'm all for, for taking funds if we need to allocate additional monies for EAP or programs within EAP. You know, a lot of third-party EAP groups offer things like this if the Health Trust doesn't. And I think it's okay to have both. But as an employer, I think we've got to be careful how we're directly allocating funds and who's going to manage that.
Sure.
It's a good idea, but I think we need to think it out more.
Yep.
But I think anything, you know, I'm a huge proponent and advocate for wellness. Anything we can do for our employees, both for physical wellness and emotional wellness.
Good.
But I think we need to
Yeah.
Take a little deeper there.
And again, this is an initiative that was primarily a result of a conversation, I will say, that I had with Steve Holmes, one of our firefighters, who as you know is on the, on the front lines of, of the things that he is speaking to and talking about with communities.
It's critically important. There's no, there's no question. I just think we have to be careful and we need to make sure that we're equitable amongst all of our employees.
Sure.
And again, I think we just need to look at our resources. What externally can we investigate before we make that decision?
Okay, excellent.
But let's keep talking.
Okay. So shifting gears and moving on, Bob Glouacki is in his new role as our Media Communications Coordinator. Bob is, actually, we sat down and talked about EXTV and IT and their relationship. And basically with Andy's retirement, EXTV will split off from IT and become more of a separate entity under Bob as in his new role as Media Communications Coordinator. So we felt it was appropriate for the short term, for, for now and probably going forward. We're going to keep evaluating it, but have him report to Assistant Town Manager Roy in the interim since we are breaking apart IT and EXTV formally. So reporting on that.
What does that leave in IT, left in IT?
Steve Bailey.
Steve Bailey.
Okay.
Yeah.
We brought him up. I thought, I just wanted to make sure I'm remembering correctly.
Right.
Yeah, thank you.
And then we would be looking to backfill, obviously, that position and so forth. So. Our consultant, Bill Keegan, who's working on the organizational plan and the succession plan, will be back in town on August 21st for his next round of conversations. There are a few stops he needs to make. He wants to talk with the unions. He also wants to talk with my assistant as well. And I'm, yeah, there are some administrative positions he has not yet spoken with. So, so he'll be back on the 21st of August to continue his work on the plan. the 21st of August to continue his work on the plan. And I was able to attend a downtown kickoff meeting today, the Downtown Pedestrian Analysis and Traffic Analysis, and Selectwoman Belanger was on the call as well. Good meeting, a lot of goals were established as part of the study, so I think it's off, on the right foot, so that, that went very well. The CIP, the meeting is, the first meeting is August 10th, and Melissa has volunteered, since I'll be on vacation in Arizona, she has volunteered to participate in that meeting on Thursday night, so she'll be there representing our office.
Great.
And should go well. We talked about the 91A training, we talked about the all-boards meeting, Health Trust, Finance and Personnel Committee met last week, I was in Concord for that. We did get some news that our capital adequacy reserve is less than it needs to be, so they're talking about raising rates to make up for that. And we're looking at, they said, used an initial figure for the pool, for the January pool of 14%. So we'll be adjusting our budgeted number. Usually, we budget seven and a half percent for the reserve, but we'll have to go higher just because of the, the way the financials are, are working at Health Trust at the moment. And National Night Out, I also wanted to add my support and thanks to Chief Poole and Bruce for putting on such a great event. What great attendance, really a marquee event for the community, so just thanks to those two and, and the department and those who came out. We are also working on the turnaround at Swayze Parkway, so we're engaging a couple of engineers and getting an estimate on a design. And we're also talking about the gate that would go at the front on Water Street, and the question was posed to me, do you want an ordinary gate, or do you want an ornate gate? And there's only one answer to that question, which is the ornate gate. So if the board has ideas about what you think a gate might look like, or would you'd want a gate to look like at the Water Street entrance, you know, we're all ears, let us know what you think.
What are our options?
Well, and that's, and we can bring you some.
So I was going to say, when, when, I think the next step after we get the design, I would like to invite the Swayze trustees to a select board meeting. I think it's pivotal that we include them as we have prior to the vote.
We made a commitment.
We did, and I'm staying by that. They've been, they have been collaborative, even though they haven't always agreed with the will of the voters. They have committed to, they've accepted it, they want to work with the board, they are, they're happy that we are keeping our word. And personally, I'm the select board rep to the trustees, so I would, we've worked very hard to build a good working relationship, and I'd like that to continue. So perhaps, once the, the design is ready, the gate options, I'd really like to invite them to a select board meeting.
Yeah.
If the rest of the board agrees.
That is exactly right.
Very good.
Sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, that's, that's fine. The last thing on my list was just the fact that the town is hosting the Down Easter Meeting, August 25th. So if you've never been to a Down Easter Operations Meeting and you have some time on the 25th of August, it usually kicks off around 10:00 in the morning and goes through lunch, and lunch is served at the meeting and so forth. It's really a very interesting time with all the different towns that are represented along the Down Easter line and all the different issues that they bring to the table at these operations meetings. There's a lot of good discussion, so.
The 25th is Friday?
I'm sorry, 25th, I say 25th?
Yeah.
It's Thursday, it should be that Thursday.
Hold on. Yeah, okay, that's a trip forward.
The 24th, yes. Apologies.
No, it's.
And where will that be, Russ?
It's at a site to be determined. When we last hosted, we actually was, we were at the Folsom Tavern, so we tried to find a location like that around town. So Economic Development is currently heading up that site to get, locate the site for the meeting, so we should know in pretty short order.
You'll let us know.
Yeah. So August 24th, my apologies, Thursday.
Any more?
And unless there are questions for me, that's my report.
I have two, and I don't, I hate to put you off, it's an awkward spot to put you in where you're a Health Trust Board Member.
Yes.
Are they the only game in town?
No.
Okay.
There is another one.
All right.
School Choice is out there.
Okay.
So there are two primary entities that offer health insurance in New Hampshire.
Two municipalities.
Those are the two.
Okay. And the only reason I'm asking is, two, two things that concern me was, how do I put this? Just, I, I guess, my impression from you is that you didn't feel that the trust had enough options for wellness or extra programs for wellness, number one, and number two, the last part about the reserves and the, the rate increase, just makes me think, do we want to look at other options?
Yeah, and so my response to that is, the regulators, the Secretary of State that regulates the Health Trust requires every time the Health Trust has a surplus in excess of $90 million, that, that surplus, whatever that number is above the $90 million, gets turned back to the ratepayers. And you know, we've seen that happen, we've had reimbursements from Health Trust, we've had return of surplus that has come back to the town. It just so happens that that reserve level of 90 million, the target is 90 million, and right now, we're at 41 million.
Okay.
So we have some ground to make up to get to that $90 million level. In terms of the offerings, the Health Trust actually offers more plans than the town currently takes advantage of. So one of the strategies that we've been discussing has been to invite them down here and to talk to us about, maybe there are four or five other plans that we could offer our employees.
Great.
And that they, they may be interested in to try to keep those costs down.
That sounds good.
Yeah. And the last point is, typically, when communities move over to the other carrier, you know, you get, you might get one year of great rates, and then in years two and three, they suddenly spike way up.
Yep.
So that, that's something that just has to be considered when you're looking at the whole picture. It doesn't mean people, you know, entities have left the Health Trust, it has happened, it's not very common, but in my experience on the board, nine times out of 10, they're back, you know, a couple of years later, so.
And I, I would agree with you, I mean, that's my personal experience with my day job, but it's worth asking the question.
Yep.
90 million to 40 million is usually, it's a big.
Yeah, it's a big gap.
It's a big gap.
Yeah.
Okay.
Understood.
And Mr. Swanson's the only retirement or, that we have around the corner?
Well.
I'm just asking.
Oh, not putting you on the spot.
Is tonight the night? No.
Okay.
More to come, but.
Select Board Committee, Select Board Committee reports, Selectwoman Belanger.
So our town manager entered both of mine, except there's just one thing, a few things I wanted to add on the meeting that we had this afternoon, when Dan, you wanted to be involved with the outreach for the businesses, just wanted to let you know, that was brought up again, so you're in the queue for that?
How am I going to be made aware of that?
They're still on the planning stage, I just wanted to let you know that it's, no one's forgotten it, it's, it's still in there, okay? And.
Could I ask a quick question? Would it be problematic for me to be more involved with that, having two select board members, or?
I can step aside if it is.
Could I be put on the, the notification for?
I, if, let me weigh in on that. I think that this kind of a study, that anything the board members feel is important to be looked at, that you may not know is already being looked at, send us a note and let us know, and we'll funnel it right to the consultants to make sure that they know, because that was part of the discussion today.
Right, but I'm not even in the meeting, so I really don't know what's being discussed.
Right, I mean, we talked about, you can probably guess many of the things that we talked about, but.
So is the answer to my question, no, it'd be better not to have two select board members involved?
I think it's fine. Two is fine.
Yeah.
Two is okay, I mean, it doesn't constitute a quorum, so.
So they haven't scheduled meetings yet, but it looks like, right now, it's going to be every other week.
I, I think I'd like to be more involved, if that works for everyone else.
I applaud that.
Having 32 years of experience downtown, on the street, as the owner of a business, I think I'm, I'm not utilizing my expertise to the greatest degree for a very important study that I've advocated for, for a number of years. And I think it's great that Selectwoman Belanger is our representative.
I'm not really a representative, just so you know. Really, it was because of the parking that I brought up last year, and Dave invited me to a meeting, and I went, because I've never been part of the process.
Should I talk to David? Would that be the best thing to do?
Sure.
It's fine with me.
You can, I, I mean, I'm looking at it this way, I think with Selectwoman Belanger being the select board rep to the planning board, I'm glad that you stepped up.
Yeah.
I think it's healthy to have two select board members part of this, and I think that your area of expertise, I think the two of you complement each other perfectly for this initiative.
Yeah, I think it's great. So where, and where I was going with this is, the potential stakeholders were added, were the Independence Museum, organized groups that put on their events, which would be team, and the Arts and Culture Commission, Holiday Parade Committee, things, people like that, where they would interview, talk to, to people about downtown and traffic flow and parking and for events and things. And most importantly, they asked about the select board involvement at this level, coming to see the select board, and they're going to put on two public sessions, and in between those, they're going to do a survey. So Russ had suggested that after the public input, the three, to do their draft, come to the select board possibly at the end of November, and Russ asked to make sure that they had action steps in.
Perfect.
Did I cover that?
Yes, very good.
All of it, okay, thank you.
Perfect.
I'm done. Thank you.
Okay. No other reports? Selectwoman Gilman?
Sure. Excuse me, the first very simple thing was demolition review for rear addition at 85 to 87 Water Street. The Heritage Commission Subcommittee found that there was no historic value to something that's actually in really bad condition. I don't know what the plans are for any replacement or reconstruction. And interestingly, the Facilities Committee had a question for us, what are we going to do with 32 Court Street? And there hasn't been a conversation about that, or any public input about that, as far as I've.
Well, I think they have to move out first.
Yeah.
I think we need to plan. I think we need to plan before they move out.
There's still programming that will happen there, at 32 Court, and the room's upstairs. We've been talking just a little bit, again, this has been sort of a conversation that the, I call us the E-Team, but the executive team of Cory and Melissa and I have been talking about departments and sort of what we might be able to do and bring to you as an, as options. And I'm sure the board has, I'm sure you have your ideas as well, and what your thoughts might be, but my view right now is that that 32 Court Street building represents a real asset to us in terms of space, and we know we need space, have been growing, and we have certain opportunities that could, could occur by virtue of that building being available and being able to shift some of our operations. So it is something that we've been talking about.
Yeah.
That might not be a bad idea to give the consultant a tour.
Okay.
Of 32 Court, if he's going to be making recommendations, knowing that we have that space, what that space looks like. Might not be a bad idea.
Yeah, it's a good idea.
So.
If you want to, what is your next?
Yep.
Perfect.
And let's see what else. And then also, at the Facilities Committee, we talked about the town hall and the gathering of parties for, of interest for discussion and actual decision-making on going forward to modernize and make comfortable a facility that's been underutilized because it's not, you know, doesn't have the amenities that we need and want. So the, trying to, the town planner and I were trying to set up a kickoff meeting with representatives from Facilities and Arts and Culture and Energy, and I had like five or six different committees.
That's a good idea.
And having trouble with that, because everybody's going on vacation.
Yeah.
But we'll be launching that soon, and then with the consultant that was looking at the Future Needs Study is going to hold a couple of public events, so that people will have some input, along with the survey results that are on the Arts and Culture Commission's website, people should take a look at that, it's quite extensive. And I think that is it. I have a Heritage Commission, and, no, I don't have anything this week. This week is clear.
Thank you very much. Selectwoman Cowan?
I thank you, Nancy, for covering for me at the Communications Advisory Committee meeting, and we did have a Water and Sewer Advisory Committee meeting, including a member of the public who showed up for an abatement, but we unfortunately, yeah, it was a big bummer, we did not have a quorum, and so we will have to reschedule that. She was very gracious, but it was embarrassing.
Mr. Dean, I think we need to have a conversation with the Chair, Bob Kelly, about moving forward and, to reduce the number of members in that committee, we would have to go to town meeting, correct?
Yes.
So I, I think we need to do that, because this is happening too frequently, and I, I think the last resort is, it's coming back to the board.
My opinion is, I, I really think that committee could function just fine with three. Originally, that's how many there were on the committee back in the early 2000s, it seemed to work okay. It grew because at that time, there was just more interest in people wanting to join, so it expanded to five under the board, and then we had the, the 2011 town meeting intervention, and that ended up creating the seven-member committee. So now we're at the seven, and.
But we need to go back to.
But we need to go back to the town, because the town adopted the.
Correct.
2011 version of the, of the, at that time, the new Water Sewer Advisory Committee. So, but I, I think, I think you could definitely do with fewer members, whether it's five or three.
I think so.
That it makes sense, especially given recruitment issues and.
Yeah.
So you regularly only have, like, what, three?
Yeah, and, you know, again, you know, August is tough, it's.
This has been ongoing.
It, it has been ongoing, and I think, you know, we have.
So maybe three with two alternates?
I was just going to suggest the same thing, yeah, that might work.
Yeah.
Yeah, and in the meantime, I mean, I don't want folks to be unable to have their abatement requests heard, so maybe we could, you know, schedule an extra select board meeting and just deal with it, you know, like, I, I don't know what the right thing to do is, but.
Yeah, I think, I think if you can, if you, if the Water Sewer Committee cannot get a quorum, I mean, one of the reasons that the select board delegated that was to get it out of these meetings, but we can't have these folks waiting.
Right.
So maybe it's something where temporarily, if they can't, if the, if the committee, you know, can't meet, there's no quorum.
Or Plan B if they can't.
You know, I mean, it's the right thing to do for our citizens.
You, you have the right to, I believe that you have the right to delegate that action to administration if you want to as well.
As the Water and Sewer Commissioners?
As, as either Public Works, with the Director making those decisions on abatements, or you could funnel it to the town manager or assistant town manager, that is a, that is an option, and we could, we could try to do something administratively internally on those.
Yeah.
That, that's, that's a decision that you would have to make.
Don't these already pass through Public Works for their recommendation?
They do, they just make a recommendation, they don't have final, they're not making a decision.
Like it used to come to the board.
Mr. Chair, I, I think as, we are the Water and Sewer Commissioners for the town.
Yes.
I think temporarily, while there's this problem with quorums, we should take this back and, and push to get that Water and Sewer Commission functioning per what Selectwoman Cowan is suggesting, through town meeting, but until then, I think we should probably take this in.
Do you know roughly how many are waiting?
I, I don't think, no, it was like four, but, you know, a couple of them were not going to show up anyway, because they also were on vacation, so, you know, so we, we just happened to have somebody who was ready and eager, and she was fine, she was very gracious, but again, you know, it's, it's a stressful thing to have.
Of course.
You know, do I owe thousands of dollars, do I not, am I abating anything? And, and I also think in the meantime, we can't charge interest on.
I was just going to say, we're not accruing because we can't meet a quorum, right? Okay, good. When, when are you scheduled to meet again?
I don't remember, Bob, Chairman Kelly just sent it around again, and I put it on my calendar, but yeah, I mean, it's a, it's a hard thing to have happen. So I, I mean, maybe the, maybe the thing is to determine if we are, if we are going to be able to have a quorum in advance of the next select board meeting. So that if we have to stick them on the agenda, we can deal with them then.
I would, I would say ideally take one more crack at it.
Yeah.
Then if you can't, then it comes to us temporarily until we can.
Right.
Put on the quorum.
And hopefully the legislative body approves.
Right.
Because that's our form of government.
Are there any other suggestions? I mean, I think that's, I just, I hate to keep people waiting.
No, and I.
It's a huge burden.
Yeah, I, I agree. And I also think, you know, it's, when, when the committee is in session, when they're able to get a quorum, if you've watched any of their meetings, they do a really good job of going through the.
They do.
And, you know, making those determinations.
They're the perfect committee to do that. It's just, you know, I just don't like that.
Yeah, no, I'm not arguing that we should take it back permanently, just temporarily.
I understand, yeah.
As Molly said, I'm sure Mr. Kelly will have some thoughts on how to proceed too, so.
Selectwoman Chartrand?
I, as mentioned earlier, I participated with you in the National Night Out. And it was great. It was a great event. And I'm very appreciative for Detective Page asking us to participate. I had a lot of fun, your daughter's activities aside. I also attended a, a meeting with Steve Holmes, who we talked about earlier, and Senator Hassan at the, at the fire station last week. And there was really good talk about wellness there and mental health. And, and thank you to the town manager for putting some elbow grease on that. How we do it obviously is important, but, but the focus is, is great. And then finally, because I was in the dunk tank, I missed the sustainability meeting. I had to go home and take a hot shower after the dunk tank. So I do not have a report on last week's sustainability committee, but I do plan on watching the meeting and reporting at our next meeting.
Terrific, thank you.
And that's it?
And I will agree that that was the activity that I immediately underwent. So if the water department is looking at the water bills of my house and Mr. Chartrand's, it was because long hot showers were required after two hours in the dunk tank. Nothing, nothing missed there.
Abatement for service rendered.
I didn't have any committee meetings, but I do want to say, when the tree committee met with us last, they talked about the 13 or 15 trees that Steve Jones was going to donate to the town. And they were expected to arrive either 2024, 2025. And I'm excited to say that the day after our meeting, Steve got word that they are ready next month. And we are working with Dave Short, who has offered to house the trees for us temporarily, working with DPW to figure out a way to go and get the trees because they're, my understanding is it's a two or three-hour ride, but it'll be an interesting tree committee next month because we weren't expecting this. And I think, you know, with you looking, Mr. Dean, at giving some budget dollars, this is, this is exciting.
Yep.
It really is.
So with one donation, we're almost doubling the number of trees they've already planted. That's great.
Is there, is there a plan of where we want to put trees?
The tree committee's working on it.
Okay. Where are we putting them?
I think you're going to get that answer sooner than not.
Okay, great.
Okay. Moving along, correspondence. We have a memo from our finance director and assistant director outlining budget instructions and also the BRC calendar. And actually, since we last met, Selectwoman Belanger and I attended the BRC kickoff meeting. I'm sorry.
Yes, we did. Oh, my God.
How could we forget that?
I forgot, I forgot it too.
Wow, that's right.
No, but where'd the budget?
Forgot to mention that.
Yeah.
Card-carrying members.
I know. I, I think it was that meeting at noon that just.
It was a, it was a great, great introductory meeting. Chair Kelly was, was reappointed as chair, Chris Suter vice chair. And we have some new volunteers with some returning volunteers. And it's, looks like it's going to be an exciting committee.
Good group again.
Yeah.
Everyone's excited.
We have a memo from Department of Transportation highlighting for the town of extra total available and block grant aid for fiscal year 2024, which is $312,663.98. Let's see what else we have. We have a notice from Kleinfelder, change of address. Notice from Jones and Beach, amending a wetland permit application. And then we have a TIF update that Selectwoman Chartrand alluded to earlier. Mr. Dean, I'll let you speak to that.
Sure. So to put a little bit of color on this, the, this shows the bank balance that is in hand as of July 2023. So you can see that six, 3.684 million is currently, sits in the TIF fund in cash. Our outstanding loan amount is 2.1 million. So that's what's left on the bond, the original bond that we borrowed money for to do the original water sewer improvements and, and the light. The Carlyle Road extension, which is something that, you know, we've been working our way through that issue. The estimate is 2.23 million at this point. The Epping Road improvements, what that is, is the, the Epping Road widening. That's a project that's been designed. And that is a, that is an actual bid in hand, 1.67 million dollars from Sabrina Construction. So we are planning on bringing that to the board at a very near meeting to ask for your approval for that. The good news is that we believe we can pay cash for that and we wouldn't have to do any borrowing.
Okay.
So really good news, the TIF is strong financially. So we will be taxing again in 2023. You can see the amounts that have been committed there. There's a question mark just because of we've had additional development in the TIF and we may see more than 1.865 million dollars added to the bottom line. And then the remaining cash balance, that number's a little, it's a little deceptive because of the Carlyle Road extension as part of that calculation. But of course, we know the Carlyle Road extension is probably a few years off at this point. So we really don't have to contemplate that for the, the very near term. So the news overall is that the TIF is healthy financially. It's doing really, really well. And we'll be seeing some more activity up there here pretty soon.
Great, thank you.
Could I ask you a question?
Please.
So are there any additional projects besides those two that are contemplated?
None, none as of yet.
Yeah. I think it would be important for any additional projects to be put in front of the voters long, long-term. I think, you know, we sold this to the voters as something that was going to reduce their taxes eventually. And they need to receive that benefit at some point. But I understand that these two projects are important and are a completion of the original vision.
Yeah. Very good.
Thank you.
That is that.
And with that, I'll let you talk about the water and sewer float.
Sure.
Data chart that you included.
So what I included in the packet for you is a report on our water supply. Basically, the water department tracks every day the water production from our various wells and the surface water plant. So you can see here on a day-to-day basis, literally how many gallons that we're, we're producing each day. And I think it's a really good report. It helps understand, you know, it helps give an understanding of how the different wells are performing as well. If you look at the second page, for example, it talks about the raw and the finished water. It talks about Larry, Larry Lane well, Gilman well, Stadium well, and how much in gallonage those wells are producing each day. And it gives, it's just a good data point. It's a good set of data. It also shows on a monthly basis what the total amount is of produced water. And we can use that as, as our bellwether statistic on our, if you look at the combined, it's called the combined daily average sheet, where it says groundwater and surface water and then combined daily averages. You'll look down and you'll see that the combined daily average for, for the max flow for July was 1,081,615 gallons. So it's a little wonky, but it does show you what we're producing each month and gives you a good idea of, of what our wells are doing. So I plan on including that going forward for the board.
Can I just, a suggestion, maybe including this for the sake of the packet, maybe under Town Manager's report?
Okay.
Rather than correspondence? Because if we had had our other discussion item, it would be about quarter of 10 right now.
Got it.
And we wouldn't be diving as deep into this. I mean, I think correspondence should be for correspondence.
Okay.
This is, this is great. And I'm, I'm appreciative that you'll do this moving forward, but let's put that under your report.
Manager report.
Yeah.
Will do.
That'd be great. Thank you for considering.
It is a great report. Thank you.
Okay. Moving along, we have a recognition from CASA for the $375 gift. We have Senate Bill 110 that was approved by the New Hampshire Legislature. Did you want to speak to this at all?
Sure. This is a really good, was a really good thing to happen in the state with our welfare. Every town has to provide, or municipality has to provide welfare for people in need. And we found ourselves with a growing need, especially during COVID. And the increases going on, but part of the problem is that departments or towns are referring their clients to other towns that have more resources and just leaving it there. And so, you know, somebody is sent to Exeter from dairy, for example, and Exeter is going to help this person out and take on the work and the cost. So what this bill did was say, okay, do it that way, but reimburse the people that you're sending to. So that way, we're, we're not burdened with more than, than we planned for or try to work with. So it was very, I'm very excited that it passed and was signed.
Thank you. Okay. Oh, I was remiss. We also have a letter of thanks from New Generation.
I would like to request that we discuss this contribution specifically. This might not be the appropriate time, but I do not think that this reflects, this certainly does not reflect my values. And I am really concerned and wondering how this got through.
Yeah, the, so we know that the, there's a Human Services Funding Committee that's in place. It's three people. That has been working with the human, the welfare administrator to make determinations. But it's, I will say, it's primarily the committee that makes, ranks the, the need and the, and the applications and so forth and makes recommendations on funding. So it's an open meeting. Anybody can go to it. And if there needs to be a discussion had at that level, you certainly are more, more than welcome to go to that meeting.
Yeah, I think that that would be incredibly appropriate and important to do. This is unfathomable that this has happened.
School vouchers. Same thing.
Okay. Reviewing the board calendar. Obviously, we have the election next Tuesday, August 15th from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Perhaps since none of us are on the ballot and all five of us will be available, that we work out some shifts. We need three of us there at all time. So maybe we can, not now, but work out.
Mr. Chair, I'm planning on being there all day.
Okay.
I cannot be there all day, but I would certainly tag in. I can certainly do the morning and the vote tally.
I'll be there all day.
You guys are.
Other than take, I, I'm bringing reports to read and things, but yeah, I plan on being there, working, being available. I typically take an hour, try to take an hour, an hour and a half break halfway through the day. But other than that, I am there.
I have a two-hour scheduled Zoom at noon.
Okay. I'm always there all day. I have, I will need to provide transportation to my daughter twice within the day. I'll be gone for like a half hour.
Yeah.
So if we could work that out.
So we just need to schedule breaks and absences amongst the five of us?
Yep.
Well, and if you.
Have it covered.
Right. And if you all don't mind being there all day, that is, that is very helpful and appreciated. But I, I don't think it's going to be.
Okay, we'll work it.
But we are required to have three of us.
Yes.
Yeah. I just took the day off and that, that's what I plan to do, whether I work at, at this level or I'm a ballot clerk, I'm there, so.
Okay. August 21st is our next select board meeting, followed by September 11th and September 25th. We are obligated to be back here on September 5th. Mr. Dean, did you look into, we had talked about at 9:00 AM?
Um, I.
You were going to check with the moderator and the clerk?
I will check with them. I have not done that yet, but I will.
Is that still scheduled for 7:00 PM, the September 5th?
We can have it whenever we want. So.
Okay.
We were looking at 9:00 AM.
Oh, in the morning.
Because we need to have.
The polls open for an hour.
The polls open for deliberative session and then the polls open for an hour. And then that's all we're required to do.
Okay, I have it in the evening, but it's going to be in the morning?
Yeah. I had it as unknown, so.
We had talked about morning.
I'd like to do the morning. Aye. Of the time of the meeting?
When is the deadline? Okay.
Well.
So we need, we need the town clerk here. We need the moderator. We need to post this by August 14th in the newspaper.
Well, I'm available at any time, so, that day.
As am I.
As am I.
What day?
So there's your quorum.
Tuesday, the 5th.
And we need three of you, so that's good.
Pardon?
We need three of you, so that's good.
Yeah, so we have it covered.
Yeah, if I put it on the calendar this far in advance, usually that works.
So we just need the moderator and the clerk?
Right.
So can we find out if they're available at 9:00 AM?
We will.
So I'm tentatively putting it at 9:00 AM.
Me too.
And I'm blocking off.
We need to know so you have the appropriate amount of time to get this in the paper.
Andy Kohler will be here.
Yeah.
Well, we don't know if she's on vacay. We have to check.
It's, she's not on the vacation calendar.
Oh, okay.
So she's good, good for that day.
So we just need to check with the moderator?
Just need to verify with Kate Miller.
Mr. Dean will be on vacation. Can you get back to the select board with her? Thank you. Appreciate that. So everyone's, August 15th for the election. Board meeting's the 21st, September 11th, September 25th, and then the special September 5th unless there's a problem with moderator. Great.
And that meeting on the September 5th is tentatively scheduled for the NOVAC?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. Okay. Anything else from the board this time? I would entertain a motion to move into non-public session under RSA 91A 32A.
Still moved.
Second.
So motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk?
Selectwoman Chartrand?
Aye.
Selectwoman Cowan?
Aye.
Selectwoman Belanger?
Aye.